Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, March the 4th, 2019. This evening we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Village Clerk Promote Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Here.
Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Elrich.
Here.
Trustee Bromberg.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Here.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Here, we have a majority. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to have removed from the agenda? Trustee Roberts.
Mayor, could I have item B on the manager's report and item B on the Corporation Council's report removed from the consent agenda, please?
Okay. Is there anything else anybody would like to have removed? If not, a motion is in order to approve the amended consent agenda for this evening. Trustee Bromberg seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen.
Aye. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. It was brought forward by the Douglas Center in Skokie and we're very pleased to have them with us this evening. Whereas, the Douglas Center, located in Skokie, Illinois, provides community daycare services for individuals with intellectual, developmental, and physical disabilities, assisting them to improve their independent living skills and to enrich their quality of life. And whereas, the Douglas Center provides comprehensive programs, clinical services, training programs, employment opportunities, and senior programs focused on assisting each individual with developmental disabilities and the management of those disabilities while building self-esteem and developing and/or improving existing social, work, and independent living skills. And whereas, the Douglas Center, since its inception in 1999, has been dedicated to providing quality programs, services, and respecting each individual's dignity and freedom to make their own choices. And whereas, the Douglas Center is involved in advocating for programs and community collaborations that promote positive system changes and that allow persons with developmental disabilities to achieve optimum independence and to provoke innovative programs and practices that improve the quality of life for all of these individuals. And whereas, Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month has been established to promote awareness and understanding of the opportunities, challenges, and needs of persons with developmental disabilities. Whereas, the Village of Skokie proudly recognizes the important contributions of the Douglas Center to Skokie and all of its citizens. Now therefore, I, George Van Dusen, on behalf of its elected officials, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Skokie, Illinois, and hereby commend all persons who are committed to and who work toward enhancing employment opportunities and improving the quality of life for people with significant disabilities. And it's my pleasure to introduce, we're fifth this evening. This proclamation does not really describe exactly what the Douglas Center does. You have to observe it and see the men and women who work so hard and so earnestly and do such a wonderful job. It's been my great pleasure to visit with the Douglas Center on a couple of occasions now. And I would urge you during the holiday season, if you have the opportunity to stop into their gift shop, a lot of the work they do is just truly innovative and it's heartwarming. And I want to thank the Douglas Center for everything they do. And I'd like to present this to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this proclamation. We have been, like the mayor said, in Skokie for about nineteen and a half years now. Started in 1999 and actually on March the 8th, we complete 20 years of being around.[460.12][460.12](applause) Skokie has been beautiful to us. We get a lot of support from the police officers because our folks do need help at times, so we call upon them quite a bit. The mayor has been truly supportive of the Douglas Center in all ways. It's been a pleasure being in Skokie. We started in Chicago in a very small storefront, actually, because nobody would give us the space. But since we moved to Skokie, we have expanded the program from 2,500 square feet to 40,000 square feet now. We started with serving one participant with disability and today we serve over 140 people every day. So, thank you so much for all the support, really appreciate. And yes, you're most welcome to come stop by, take a look, and shop for your holiday gifts or any time. We're here Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, so you're most welcome, all of you. Thank you again.
And don't forget, give your address.[530.16][530.16](applause)
We are located on 3445 West Howard Street, right across from the water reclamation plant on McCormick and Howard, so please do come by. Thank you again. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have a great swearing-in. Two veterans of the Skokie Police Department, both sergeants, being promoted to commander, and the honors will be done by our village clerk, Promote Shaw.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name, please.
Jesse Barnes.
Having been appointed to?
Having been appointed to.
The office of police commander?
The office of police commander.
In the Village of Skokie?
In the Village of Skokie.
In the County of Cook?
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of police commander?
The duties of police commander.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And Commander, would you introduce your family and friends?
I will. I have my mother, Sue, her husband Jim, my son Jesse, my wife Jessica, and my daughter Jagger.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
John Morsefelder.
Having been appointed to?
Having been appointed to.
The office of police commander?
The office of police commander.
In the Village of Skokie?
In the Village of Skokie.
In the County of Cook?
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of police commander?
The duties of police commander.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And Commander, would you do the honors?
Sure. First and foremost, I have my girlfriend Ashley. And I have my brother Dan. My mom and dad, Alan and Roseanne. Uncle Al and Aunt Joan. And then I have Chuck and Paulette, Corinne, Aunt Sally.[744.43][744.43](laughter) Finally, I have the best neighbors in the world, the Levine's in the world right here.
And of course, Chief Scarpelli is with us this evening. Most of us are aware, but for the family and friends, these are significant promotions, as I'm sure you're well aware. But, for the Village of Skokie, it's representative of the fact that we have the best police department in the country. And we say that knowing full well that it would be taken as hometown pride, but according to our own residents, 90% of whom, according to our most recent survey, not taken by us, by the way, confirm that the support of our police department in the community, and these are the people who sometimes get the ticket, overwhelmingly approve of the job that Jesse Barnes and John Morsefelder do for us. Because they're representative of the finest of the men and women in blue who serve us every day without complaint, knowing the difficulty of the job that's ahead, and never really knowing what the day is going to bring. And it's something that we're all very proud of and we're grateful for. And I point this out everywhere I go, because it happens to be very true. All of the national rating agencies hold the Skokie Police Department up as being a flagship department. And that means that other departments across the country base themselves on the best practices as Chief Scarpelli and our commanders and everybody else in our department practices. So it's with heartfelt shape that we thank Jesse and John this evening, but we thank everybody else who is here, our police department and our fire department. Both public departments do such a wonderful job. So thank you very much, gentlemen. And let's take a couple-minute break. I know everybody wants to hear about the 2019 water main and sewer rehab project, but
Well, that's a wise play.
All you have to do is adjourn, Mayor, we're all set here.
Motion to adjourn. I mean, next item on the agenda?[1292.33][1292.33](laughter)
I was just thinking, can I second?
A motion to put the remainder of the agenda on the consent. Our next item on the agenda is report of our village manager, John Lockery.
Thank you, Mayor Van Dusen, and good evening, everyone. Item A was approved as part of the consent agenda this evening. Item B is regarding the 2019 water main and sewer rehabilitation improvement project by A-Lamp Concrete from Schaumburg, Illinois, for 2.25 million. The Fiscal Year 2019 Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, budget provides funding for water system improvements in various areas throughout the village. The replacement of 1,078 feet of new 12-inch diameter water main, 2,195 feet of new 8-inch diameter water main, and 2,295 feet of new 6-inch diameter water main is planned. Six bid responses were received for the above contract. It is recommended that a contract be awarded to A-Lamp Concrete, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, in the amount of 2.25 million. The firm is pre-qualified with the Illinois Department of Transportation and has successfully completed past projects within the village. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request mayor and board approval.
A motion for that approval would be in order. Trustee Roberts seconded by trustee O'Rourke. Trustee Roberts.
I thank you for, to the village manager, for, I know you've provided me with some information, but I think it's good, you know, when we're spending 2.2 million dollars to just chat about it for a minute, but if, Eric, maybe if you could just put this in context for me of what this is, this year's capital budget for this type of work, and what do you anticipate next year and going forward, and what is, are we keeping up with our sewer and water main repairs overall?
Well, I will always be the, in favor of aggressive capital spending.[1434.54][1434.54](laughter) Nick knows very well my goals. We, it's hard to say how we're keeping up. We talked to the, to the water sewer superintendent today, and even with this severe weather winter, we're at about the same breaks. Breaks are one of the, one of the ways we measure how our system's going. It's essentially the same as last year, the number of breaks. So that's, that's a good, good sign. Generally, our water, our water quality is a good level, that's another good sign. With our increase in street resurfacing, though, we're sort of catching up to streets where infrastructure that doesn't need repair, we're running out of those streets. So, as an example, last year we did an area between Emerson and Gulf, Kedvale Keystone and Karlov. We did water main, and then we did streets right after it. That's sort of the, it's a really, it's actually an area, I've been waiting to do streets for about five years, but the water main caught up. I think with water funding, typically we do 2 million a year in water, about a million or so in sewer. There's a lot of unknowns coming forward down, down the pipe. There's, there's new legislation regarding lead services that isn't known to any community yet. They haven't made what's going to be required, so it's hard to tell exactly what our level of spending should be. But, based on our, our recent break history, we're keeping up, but again, I would always be the advocate for increased capital spending.
And so, the repairs, it looks like it's pretty scattered all over the village?
Yeah.
So, a lot of these, these streets won't, these are not paired with any type of street resurfacing for the most part?
For the most part, no. And what, a little bit different this year, two of the areas, we're actually increasing pipe, pipe size for, because of development that's going in the area.
Mm-hmm.
You do water main repairs for two reasons, or replacements for two reasons. Either break history, too many breaks, or you need more, more water there. So, this is a good sign. We're, we're not just chasing breaks, we're actually anticipating the new development. Some of the, we also do valves, we also do sewer point repairs. Some of those areas are involved with our street resurfacing, and they were brought up because of that project. We do examination of the sewers prior to any street resurfacing to pick out. We don't want to resurface a street and then have a huge sinkhole, so we, it's, we typically do that prior to street projects.
So, and I guess part of the good news is despite our cold spells where you're not experiencing any more breaks?
Yeah, I was, I was surprised by that data, but yeah, it's, it's in line with last year.
All right. Thanks, Eric.
Any other comments or questions? If not, yes.
Trustee.
It's just a comment that I learned from your department about that the citizen should know that you're supposed to keep it running, the water for several days after, for, up to a couple of weeks after the cold that we had, is that right?
Um, I'm not the one to ask, but yeah.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
I had some frozen pipes in my house. I probably should have done that.[1636.63][1636.63](laughter)
So I credit that for, yeah.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Elrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye. The motion passes.
And that completes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is report of our Corporation Council, Michael Lorch.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, good evening, everyone. Item A is an ordinance which was on the consent agenda at the beginning of this evening and was adopted at that time. Item B on my agenda and report is a, is up for second reading and adoption tonight. The first reading was on February 19th, 2019. This ordinance will establish the regulation of body art establishments and artists through a licensing and permitting process. The popularity of tattoo services, body piercing, and other related procedures have become more prevalent in recent years, including within the Village of Skokie. And this ordinance will work to regulate these arts. Body art procedures may affect public health and public welfare, including if non-sterilized needles are used, which can lead to the spread of certain bloodborne illnesses. This ordinance establishes the licensing of the establishments, requires that individual practitioners are employed or associated- practitioners are employed or associated with a licensed establishment, and that they obtain a permit to be body art practitioners. Professional providers of tattoo, body piercing, and related procedures have encouraged the village to regulate and inspect establishments that are providing such services. This is also consistent with the discussions and testimony from tattoo artists that we had on the record here previously, and also consistent with emails that we have received from practitioners within the village. Mayor, I would be requesting board action on this ordinance this evening.
Thank you. A motion on item B of the report of the corporation council would be in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Trustee Roberts.
Dr. Knard, could I, would you mind answering that question?
No.
I think you probably recall that I asked at our last meeting, I, well, thank you all, including the corporation council, I thought you guys did a very nice job in drafting this. I think it seems to be very fair and comprehensive. But I just wondering what, as I asked last time, what, have you gotten any feedback from any of the beauty parlors that will be subject to these fees and regulations?
Yes.
And what was their response?
We did send a, a letter to the six, five beauty parlors and Mr. Freego, and we essentially had very positive response. Mr. Freego said he completely agreed. I don't know if you, that email was shared with you?
Yes.
Yes, with all of the regulations, and he would be able to be in full compliance. There were also two beauty parlors, and actually Bruce spoke with them, so I'll let him answer the question.
Yeah, I received calls from two of the beauty salons, and both of them just questioned the intent of the ordinance. They explained that we were going to start the enforcement of the IDPH Body Art Act, explain the new licensing of the establishment and the body artist permit, and the hepatitis B vaccination, and they were all favorable of that and had no problem with complying.
Great. Thank, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
I think that is a great idea. That's what we should do, right? Before we impose regulations, we should make sure.
I think our business is appreciated.
Everyone is notified, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye, the motion passes.
Item C is a resolution on my report for first reading and board action tonight. This resolution will approve a plat of subdivision for property located at 7515 through 7555 Linder Avenue and 7520 Long Avenue in Skokie, Illinois. All of this is located in an M1 Office Assembly Industrial District. The subdivision will consolidate three lots into one pursuant to the Linder subdivision plat dated January 10th of 2019. The lots will be redeveloped in an industrial warehouse building. Mayor, I would request board action on this resolution this evening.
Thank you. A motion on item C, a resolution approving a plat of subdivision for 7515 to 7555 Linder and 7520 Lawn in the M1 Office Assembly District would be in order. Trustee Sutker, seconded by trustee Bromberg. Are there any comments or questions on item C? If not, call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye, the motion passes.
Item D is a resolution on my report for first reading and also board action tonight. This resolution will approve a grant of permanent easement to the State of Illinois, its Department of Transportation, for a portion of the southwest corner of Skokie Boulevard at Niles Center Road. This easement is necessary and is part of a larger project by the State of Illinois for needed roadway improvements in the area. That is all detailed in Eric Cook's memo. Mayor, I'd ask for board action tonight.
A motion on item D, a resolution approving and authorizing a grant of easement to IDOT for a portion of the southwest corner of Skokie Boulevard and Niles Center Road would be in order. Trustee Bromberg, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Are there any comments or questions? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye, the motion passes.
Item E is a resolution on my report for first reading and also board action tonight. It is a parallel, moment please. Yeah, it's a parallel resolution to the previous one. This resolution will approve a grant of permanent easement of the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for a portion of the northeast corner of Skokie Boulevard at Niles Center Road. This easement is necessary and is part of a larger project by the State of Illinois for needed roadway improvements in the area, and is also set forth in Eric Cook's memorandum, which was part of the record. Mayor, I would request board action tonight.
A motion on item D, resolution authorizing an approving grant of easement to IDOT for a portion of the northeast corner of Skokie Boulevard in Niles Center Road. Trustee Ulrich, seconded by trustee Roberts. Any comments or questions on item D? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye, the motion passes.
Mayor, that would conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you. A matter of unfinished business, the one-year action plan for CDBG 2019-2020. Carrie Haberstich.
Good evening. All right. All right. Tonight's public hearing is being conducted to obtain final input to the village's Community Development Block Rant, or CDBG, one-year action plan for program year 19, which is also known as fiscal year 2020. Plan approval, public hearings were, are usually held in March of each year, following the three previous hearings held in December, January, and February. This hearing will conclude with the board's formal consideration and anticipated approval of the action plan prior to the submittal of this plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. This hearing was legally advertised in a local newspaper on January 31st, including a list of the statutory, statutory goals of the CDBG program and the proposed projects and activities for the action plan. Preliminary draft copies of the plan were available at Village Hall and the Skokie Public Library for a 30-day public review period, and no comments were submitted by the public. So tonight's the fourth and final one, or I'm hoping final, that we won't have to do a substantial amendment in the future, once we do find out what our entitlement amount will be. So we have a five-year consolidated plan, which is kind of like a comprehensive plan for the CDBG program, which is a guide to, for us to prioritize funding decisions, also gives a general review of demographics, and it addresses the three primary goals of the 1974 Housing and Community Development Act, which are to provide decent housing, provide a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities. And the purpose of the one-year action plan is basically an application to HUD for entitlement funding, and it distributes funds to address, address village goals and objectives. And this, the one that's being considered tonight is the fifth and final one of our five-year plan, so at this time next year, we'll be considering another five-year plan, so keep that on your radar screen. The vision statement for this current consolidated plan is, "Skokie's CDBG program will provide a better quality of life for low and moderate income residents through bricks and mortar projects and service activities." We have a total of five goals. Three of them are for capital improvements. One is to make housing affordable, accessible, and sustainable, improve public infrastructure, and improve facilities. We have one services goal, to provide financial assistance for programs and services, and then one planning and administration goal, just to run the program on a daily basis. Objectives for Skokie, for the making housing affordable, accessible, and sustainable, including investing in owner-occupied homes, rental apartments, helping with elderly and frail elderly, special needs, and energy efficiency. For public infrastructure includes street resurfacing and sidewalk replacement. Improving facilities are construction and rehabilitation projects, so organizations can provide improved, expanded, or more affordable services with other funding sources. So these are organizations that actually have property in Skokie that have needs for both their, their building and also for their clients, so we strongly encourage them to look for the, the building improvement aspects, because there isn't a cap, per se, for those types of activities, and then that frees up funding for them to invest in their clients. And the objectives for providing financial assistance for program and services, this is our 15% cap, so counseling services for children through seniors, special needs, and healthcare-type services, immigrant resettlement, interpretation, and multilingual staff, and, and housing-related services by addressing issues such as homelessness prevention. So the planning and administration-type activities, as I mentioned before, our five-year consolidated plan and our one-year action plan, we do an annual year-end report that we submit to HUD in the summer every year, and just, again, the day-to-day activities. And our funding focus is to help Skokie's most vulnerable residents, both directly and through not-for-profit organizations. So we're still not sure what our entitlement amount will be, so we are, the action plan as you have this evening, we're still estimating 550,000 in entitlement funding from HUD, 100,000 from unallocated funds in the past, either additional funds, like from last year, or just, you know, the bids came in under what we had budgeted, so it adds up to an amount that we can invest in the construction and rehab-type activities. And as of right now, we still don't have any program income, so we're going to budget zero, since we're nearing the end of the, the program year. And all of this is subject to flexibility that we have written in the action plan, and if we receive, since we're budgeting 550,000 from HUD, we will need to do a substantial amendment to our action plan if the entitlement funding is less than 440,000. We're hoping we don't go that low, but hopefully it'll be within that range, that we wouldn't have to come back and have to adjust the funding distribution. If we actually receive more than 660,000, we'll distribute as the flexibility criteria in the action plan, but anything over that will just carry over to the next program year. And so we built in a flexibility of plus, plus or minus 20%, which worked well for this, the current year that we're in now, so we're going to continue and hope that that works out again for a second year in a row. So if funding is less than 550,000, we'll do across-the-board adjustments to the best of our ability, will, no amount will be less than $3,000. We do have a few activities that are right at 3,000, so we'll hold them at that line and proportionately reduce accordingly with the remaining activities and projects. So our goal is to not have any reductions less than 80% of budget amounts, but since we're holding the line on some of those 3,000, it might be a little bit less, but overall, we're keeping it within the, the flexibility as written in the action plan. And we do have a little bit more of unallocated funding, if necessary, that, you know, if it's just slightly under 550,000, we might still be able to have the construction and rehab projects, fully fund those, even if we don't receive the full 550,000. And if entitlement funding is greater than 550,000, if it's 570,000, we'll fund the Sassy Senior Connections Program. If the village is awarded 583,334,000, we'll provide $2,000 to the Center for Enriched Living to help with their employment services for their disabled client, clients. Any amount above that, the social worker position, we'll do the balance of the 15% services cap, so if we only receive 560,000, I'm not going to try and do math live, but if we do receive 560,000, we'll take 15% of that additional funding and put that towards the social worker and not fund the two alternate projects, as an example. And then any additional above that, we'll put towards the Affordable Housing Initiative by the village. So the next steps would be village board approval of the action plan this evening, and submitting the action plan sometime after March 17th, that's our usual date, but since we don't know what the funding is, HUD has asked that all communities not submit their action plan until we know what the amount is, make the proper adjustments in the action plan, and then submit that, so, but absolutely no later than August 16th will we submit that. Hopefully, we'll hear of an entitlement amount prior to that, and we'll just be ready to go, once we find out what that amount is. And we're hoping to begin as close to May 1st as possible, but it could be October before we could really kick off our program year. Are there any questions?
A motion to approve the action plan, trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by trustee Bromberg. Comments, questions? Trustee Roberts?
Carrie, what's, I was reading the action plan about the Affordable Housing Initiative. There's 50,000 earmarked for that initiative?
I think it, yeah, a little over 50,000, I think 54,500 is the amount that we have currently.
And what's the status of the staff's discussion, or, or what is the plans for that money at this point?
We're hoping to kickstart some investment into affordable housing in Skokie. The funding is on the construction rehab end of funding and not part of like the, the 15% service cap, so it would be some sort of investment, you know, possibly a single-family home that would be, become an affordable unit. Just, it needs to be construction-related, we're just looking for an opportunity, well, it could be money towards acquisition as another option that would not count against the service cap, so we're just looking for an opportunity to invest in the year without a complete, you know, focus on what exactly that might be, also working with HUD staff to make sure that we meet the parameters of the program for CDBG eligibility, and then also invest in Skokie as well.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. I would like to take one moment to note and mourn the passing of Estelle Greenberg, who was a very active member of our Consumer Affairs Commission. She worked and helped promote, very actively, the very successful farmer's market. She was also a member over her lifetime, in many years here in the village, with a lot of philanthropies. We will miss Estelle. She was a wonderful woman, and she worked very hard in behalf of the village. And it gives me pleasure to also note this evening that Will Evans, chairman of the village's Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, was just, just announced that he is being nominated to be the chairman of the Illinois Tollway Board by Governor Pritzker. So our congratulations go to Will. We've had great admiration for him, and he did ask us to assure everybody, he is continuing as the chairman of the Board of Fire and Police Commission. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board? Yes, sir. If you would just come to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is R. Raz Jenkins. That's R.A.Z.Z., last name Jenkins, and that's a real name. Mayor Van Dusen, we've actually met before. You and your staff gave myself and others a great tour of the, of the underutilized police, of the police building that you were looking to sell, when I was the vice chair of the Board of the Chicago Lighthouse.
Ah, yes, yes.
Yeah, so we met in your office, and you gave us- Yeah, so we met in your office, and you gave us a tour, and we had a lovely time. We actually went with another facility up in Glenview, but you showed us great courtesy. And I'm here tonight, really, to reintroduce myself to you, and introduce myself to the members of the trustee board here. I am actually a candidate for trustee of Oakton Community College's Board of Trustees, and I wanted to give you some information, that the Skokie and Evanston League of Women Voters, on their website, www.lwve.org, has put up a list of all 13 candidates that are running for three open seats for the Oakton Board of Trustees on the April 2nd election. So, there are 13 people running for three seats, and we range everywhere from Evanston to the north in Glenview, I'm in Des Plaines, but we all are running for those, for those three open seats in the April 2nd election. So, it's, so I'm here to introduce myself to you, and also to let you and your staff and the people here in Skokie know that the Oakton Community College Board of Trustees has a, has a great slate of candidates. We all are, they're all really fine people, and look forward to being able to work with you on community college issues, so that if down the road, there is a chance for my, for, for me or someone else on our board to reach out to you, or you to reach out to us, there's a name attached to a face, and with a name like Raz, you know, it's kind of hard to, kind of hard to hide. So, I wanted to reach out here today and introduce myself, say hello, and wish you all the best, and let you know about that, about that upcoming election, and where you can find information on all 13 candidates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're very proud to be home to the Oakton-Skokie campus.
Absolutely.
It's a great institution, and it's one of the crown jewels of the village, so we wish you the very best, and it's a pleasure to make your re-acquaintance, and thank you for coming and visiting with us.
Oh, absolutely. You folks have, you, you run a, you, you run a great meeting here.
Well, thank you. We have great people working with us. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Good luck to you.
Thanks, sir.
Trustee Roberts, I think it's your turn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.